All right, I'd like to call this regular village board meeting for order. If you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Court, please call the roll.
Trusty Bowden?
Here.
Trusty Hudson?
Here.
Trusty Jones?
Here.
Trusty Moravka?
Here.
Trusty Sluse?
Here.
Trusty Sterba?
Here.
All right, public comments.
I'd like to address the hiring of Mr. Walters for being a full-time building and zoning coordinator position. Several meetings and issues have addressed the need for a full-time code enforcement officer. I was under the impression that this position would be the resolution to those issues and whoever hired would be able to inspect, enforce zoning, property maintenance within the village limits as the job suggested. Since we already pay safe bill for inspections, a part-time code enforcement service, whoever hired should be able to fill those positions instantly without any additional cost burdens to the villagers or the taxpayers. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Evening, Ellen Welsh. Just a few points I want to go over with. Firstly, I don't know if you forgot, I dropped off some petitions today for people against the chicken stuff. Nick, I'd like you to pay attention to the take time. Wasn't a lot of them, but a lot of them were from our neighborhood.
Yeah.
And you've mentioned that you get it on Facebook and emails. Get out, everybody, get out and talk to people. Walk down your block. Get out and talk to people, face-to-face, not just an email and Facebook. I think you'll get a better feeling. You said you had friends with chickens.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I was at their house last Saturday.
Okay, are they in the village?
No.
Okay, then you brought that up at the last meeting. Are you representing them or are you representing?
Well, you brought about staking at their house. They got 20 chickens in the coop.
Well, okay, it's the perspective you left. You made the statement, "I have friends with chickens."
Yeah, I said what I say.
Yeah, well, okay, well, you just made it where they're not in the village limits. But with that flat statement, you're like, okay, well, who's he representing today? Okay, clear enough, thank you.
Yeah.
Another thing, there was an issue, not an issue, but a point made up by Representative Clark about how it's going to bring a 27% increase to the building fund. How can you estimate what an increase is going to be unless there is a fee schedule made up? I might be missing something here. Does somebody have a secret fee schedule for everything made up? I don't know. That's the one thing I question. How can estimates be made when there's no fee schedule? Where are the numbers coming from? And here's a question I'm going to ask. Mr. Jones, the last planning commission meeting, you addressed Trusty Sluse if she had chickens at her residence, and her answer was no. I accepted that, but then people started asking me questions and bringing to the point. Problem is, you need to rephrase your question to where, "Have you ever violated the livestock ordinance of the city of Piattone?"
I have not.
Okay. And hopefully, people with the pictures and stuff like that don't come forth. That's fine. I accept that answer. You're on record for it.
Yes, I am.
Okay. It's beautiful. Another thing, too, to bring up with the assessments of your son's home and your own. I went on the website for the county assessment, and I found forums to do that. Have you guys proceeded to properly address that problem? Don't have to answer me. Just, it was easy. I found it. So why is this something that somebody has to track you down at a public meeting to resolve?
There's no ordinance, we have no ordinance that requires consultation.
Okay, all right, so you don't have no ordinance, but the problem is, are they being, paying their full amount of taxes? That's the problem. Are you being taxed on all your improvements? Is the new homes being taxed at their total value? That's the problem. We're being taxed at our full value. Is your properties and your son's property being taxed at the values? So what I asked there is, get your business in order, get it resolved, or resign. You have no business representing the people of Piattone operating like this.
What did I do wrong with having two pens and two parcels? I've lived here for 16 years.
Okay, we both, okay, did we, I ain't going to argue. Okay, and basically, I would suggest an investigation into all the building permits and see if everything's in code. With our new code enforcement, maybe we can allow that, unless he's not allowed to inspect trustees. So, simple as that. That's the problem there. There's perception. There's a perception about it.
There isn't.
Okay, that's your opinion. I'm giving you my opinion.
I've been on this board for three years.
I have the floor right now, thank you.
I won't answer your questions.
I didn't ask you to answer it.
But you questioned me, so I should be able to speak back.
Public forum. My three minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Basically, like I said, perception. It's not very good. From the chickens, why is this chicken stuff even still on the agenda? Shouldn't even be wasting your time with it. Resolve it. Have some backbone. Get backbone. Yes or no? Get it over with. Get it out of your way. We shouldn't even be arguing about it. We shouldn't even be going back and forth debating it. So move on. Get it over with. It just, another thing comes, it's just that I get irritated when people are not paying their proper taxes. Most people are, and if it's a representative of the village, everyone else should be too. And that's it. And I really do think that maybe if some things are proven improper, maybe some members need to be censured of this board. If proven, I really would like to see, when you get your investigator, we're going to go around, you're going to investigate everybody and seeing who's up to code and everything. And if they're not up to code, what are we going to do? We're going to tear down buildings? We're going to tear down fences? Let's get it resolved. And there are going to be fines for it. Point taken? That's all.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Jones, Ms. Moravka, Mr. Bowden. Thank you for your time serving the village. Appreciate it. I don't know if you made any friends on that time, but I hope you did.
Anybody else?
I'll go. I'm Catherine John. I am here to not waste your time, to let you guys know that I am still very passionate about getting our backyard chickens to kind of piggyback off of what was just brought up a little bit. I get your point that you brought up, they do not smell if you upkeep the chickens, so I don't think that is a valid concern for neighbors. I know that if I talked to my neighbors, they would not mind having chickens as long as they were not in their yards, which they wouldn't be. Again, we're just going to, you know, keep showing up, keep voicing our opinions, and hopefully, we can get this thing updated. But thank you.
Greetings, village representatives. I am Jolene Wollenga. I'm a Piattone resident and a taxpayer here in the village of Piattone. I'm, again, commenting in support of changing the local ordinance to allow the laying hens in village limits. And I understand we're transitioning to a new board. I would like you to, you know, I still want to urge you to consider discussion regarding this request. We've brought this request up at several meetings, have attended special committee meetings, and during the discussion, village representatives suggested pricing a mailer to be sent out tall in village limits, which we already considered and rejected as an option. However, we haven't received any update in regards to such survey, and I haven't received anything sent out in the mail. This request for the chickens has been brought up in the village many times, and our group is not the first to speak up to change ordinance. Before I even knew chickens were illegal in the village, I kind of found peace by watching them interact while I was visiting a friend out of town. She had residential setting chickens, smoke, a small coop in her backyard, and I just, I've seen how simple the chicks were to care for. I enjoyed the fresh eggs and the fresh chicken while I was staying with my friend. When you consume organic foods, your body literally feels happy. Eggs are an excellent source of protein and one of the many benefits that chicken keeping has to offer. We've tried really hard to collaborate and provide the benefits of our requests along with examples of other ordinances that have been successfully amended across the state. As cleanliness is a concern to uninformed naysayers, people who keep chickens do know to regularly clean the coop and use a barn lime or something to combat odor issues that may or may not come up. Please, again, consider, you know, we're asking to, a discussion or vote with our representatives or new representatives to allow only backyard hens in the village of Piattone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bales? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda, the minutes for my April 10th meeting, payroll accounts payable, payroll pay period ending April 15th. Total payroll, $52,783.47. Accounts payable, we have two amounts, one because of the, our fiscal year ended 3/31, so we have payments up until 3/31. Total, $34,189.37, of which $31,621.12 is out of the general fund, $500 out of the Business Development District Fund, $250 from the TIF number one fund, and $1,818.25 from the TIF two fund. And then the period ending April 21st, we have total expenditures of $90,854.85, of which $33,791 is general fund, $14,110 is the building permit escrow fund, $5,000 is motor fuel tax fund, Business Development District, $24,052. TIF one, $2,602, and TIF two, $11,300. We also have liquor licenses, tobacco and amp permits for approval, and those include Burcots for Class D, Casey's for Class D1 and tobacco, DV events, game on bar and grill, Class A, O and M, and amplifier, fire pit, bar and grill, Class E and an amplifier, Hanson's dugout, Class A, M2, Max Circle K, Class D1 and F, and tobacco, Piattone American Legion, Class A, O and M2, RC Services, Class D1 and F, and tobacco, Tony's Pizza, Class E, Vegas Cafe, Class V, Vinnyac Liquor, Piattone Tobacco and Liquors, Class D and tobacco, Will County Fair Association, Class A, O, M2 and amplifier. Any items on the consent agenda that any board member would like removed?
Have all these establishments paid all their fees?
I'll defer to Mr. Clark. Yes.
Everybody's paid everything.
I'd have to double check, but we've got all the paperwork and they don't come up due to the end of the month.
We could approve this and then they not pay, right?
The mayor would, just wouldn't sign their license.
Okay. So we have a check out of this, right? Okay, that's fine. Make motion to approve.
Second.
And moved in second to approve the consent agenda by, moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Sluse?
Trusty Bowden?
Yes.
Trusty Hudson?
Yes.
Trusty Jones?
Yes.
Trusty Moravka?
Present.
Trusty Sluse?
Yes.
Trusty Sterba?
Yes.
All right, moving on to staff and committee reports. Let's start with Aqua. Angie?
Hi, I have no updates. I didn't know if anybody had any questions for me. No? Okay.
Good, thank you.
Oh, you know what, Mayor? There is a restoration around one of the tower towers that I've had a few calls on, and that will be getting taken care of soon if it hasn't already started today.
Okay.
Okay.
Angie, just want to comment on your Earth Day project. People may have noticed those around town.
Yeah, I unfortunately was in our northern division, so I wasn't able to attend, but I heard everybody had a really great time, and we partnered with Aqua Partner Piattone to do spray paint, Aqua logo, or Piattone, Village of Piattone logo in front of the storm drains, basically promoting people not to dump anything but water down the drain, so.
I saw that today. I told my son, I'm like, oh, this is pretty cool.
Yeah, 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 I saw the pictures, they looked great, so, yeah, thank you for participating in that. Yeah. I have a few pictures, too, I can forward to you, Amy, so.
Okay. I got a few from Bob, and I took one.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. Yeah, thank you for participating.
All right, thanks, Angie.
All right.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, public works, Bob?
Don't have much, just, if you go behind the bar there, you'll see that the crosswalks are done today. They look pretty good. Public Works just continues day-to-day operations. You know, with the three guys we have right now, we're getting things done. Street sweeping's been done, brush is, continues to go, and we'll continue to do that, so that's really all I have. Couple other things. Some of our projects, me and Troy have been working on and getting that going. Street resurfacing, sidewalks, so it's all going, so that's all I got.
Any questions?
I have a couple approvals for some new employees that you'll, at least one's here. The other one wasn't able to make it, so.
How's fringe pickup going?
Going good. I think the rules we put into place a few years ago, I mean, sometimes you got to leave a little hanger, but it's going good, so.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Yep.
All right, police report.
I'll just give you a little update on the hiring. So, as you know, we had the two resignations that you guys approved at the last board, you accepted resignation. The next board meeting, there'll be one more officer is resigning, he's going to Will County. So we'll be down three officers. So right now, we have 15 applications that have come in either through the lateral program or through the initial hire program. The lateral program closes May 1st, and then at that time, we'll review all the, all the applications for eligibility, and then there'll be interviews completed on them. And then the initial hires will have a written test that'll be taken online, and then once the written test is completed, then the company will forward me the results of that, and then we will do interviews for that and then post the list for that, so. Although we've lost three, it looks like we may have some good candidates to replace them hopefully.
Thank you.
Anything else, just looking.
All right, Troy?
Bob covered most of it, unless there's any questions for me.
Do we have a punch list for the rural street parking lot?
Yeah, I heard that's the only items that remain, whatever's on the punch list, which I'll check into.
Okay. Administrator report?
Nothing to add to my written report unless there's any questions on the contents.
Okay. And then we did have a treasures report in there, and I pulled it up, or Amy pulled it up. I just wanted to go over a few points with the board. Let's go to the next page there. So our budget that we adopted last year reflected a drawdown on the fund balance of approximately $1.2 million. Based on estimated revenues expenditures, the general fund will actually have a surplus of approximately $62,000. So I just, I want to congratulate all the employees, the board, especially the AOC committee for really getting a handle on our expenses and our revenues. I don't, I don't recall the last time we had a surplus, so congratulations, everybody, there. The fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2023, which is, was May 31st, is about $12,125,000, which is way above our fund balance policy. Some of the revenues that we got in were one-time ARPA funds that we used to do some stormwater projects in town. And then go on to the next page. This just kind of gives an overview of the revenues. The, the blue bar is the budget, and the orange bar is what actually occurred, so. Sales tax was 111% budgeted, state income tax was 122%. The grant revenues were the ARPA funds that we used to fund the Alburn Street Storm Sewer and Railroad Street project. Our income, interest income was much higher than the budget because we were able to move some of our funds into higher interest accounts as the interest rates have gone up. And vehicle license revenues were about $71,000. And then next page talks about general fund expenditures. So all the departments were under budget with just the exception of police, and that was due to the fact that we purchased a couple of vehicles that were not reflected in the 2023 budget. And the next page just goes over a couple other funds, the motor fuel tax fund was pretty much on target. Business Development District Fund, our sales tax revenues were about 111% of the amount budgeted, and the expenditures in that fund all went towards, mostly went to funding the Railroad Street project. And the TIF two fund shows revenues, an amount of, you know, $3,055,000. Those were the bonds that we, the bond proceeds that we're going to be using to do the project out on High 57 in Wilmington, Piattone Road, so. So, and there's also, the rest of the report, there's some, there's the detail that you guys want to look at that. If you have any questions, just let us know, but all in all, a good report from last year. Also, trustees I included, our consultant just put together some of the items that she's been able to accomplish in the last year. I just kind of asked her to go over some of the things that she was able to get done, and I'm not going to spend the time going over it, but it's two pages of, she's really made a big difference in the finance department and really done a nice job there, so I just wanted you guys to all be aware of what's been going on with that. All right, I don't think I missed any committees or staff. Moving on, my comments, I don't really have any additional comments. We don't have any old business. New business, approved new business registration for Rebel Ice Cream on 116 Main Street. Questions? Anybody from Rebel Ice Cream here? Want to step up to the podium and introduce yourself?
My name is Terrance Uper. I'm the owner of Rebel Ice Cream, and I appreciate the open arms we receive from everyone I've talked with at the village, especially you, our village owner, because it's been amazing. And we're opening Friday, and we look forward to providing an amazing ice cream experience. I hope to see all of you there.
Thank you.
Motion to approve it.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Sluse?
Trusty Bowden?
Yes.
Trusty Hudson?
Yes.
Trusty Jones?
Yes.
Trusty Moravka?
Yes.
Trusty Sluse?
Yes.
Trusty Sterba?
Yes.
All right, item E, approved payout three, the final payment, the amount of $5,000 for MFT Street Resurfacing on Garfue Mill and Penn Lane that took place last summer. Any comments, Troy?
No, this was just retention left over from last year, so just releasing the last $5,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hudson, second by trustee Moravka.
Trusty Bowden?
Yes.
Trusty Hudson?
Yes.
Trusty Jones?
Yes.
Trusty Moravka?
Yes.
Trusty Sluse?
Yes.
Trusty Sterba?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, I'm going to move down to after our executive session. That's the motion to hire Henry Walters for the full-time position of building and zoning coordinator. Next on the agenda is motion to hire Landon Moravka for full-time labor position in Public Works Department. And we're going to ask trustee Moravka to refuse herself.
Motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Sluse, second by trustee Sterba.
Trusty Bowden?
Yes.
Trusty Hudson?
Yes.
Trusty Jones?
Yes.
Trusty Sluse?
Yes.
Trusty Sterba?
Yes.
Item H, motion to hire James McKay for full-time labor position in Public Works Department.
Motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Sluse, second by trustee Sterba.
Trusty Bowden?
Yes.
Trusty Hudson?
Yes.
Trusty Jones?
Yes.
Trusty Moravka?
Yes.
Trusty Sluse?
Yes.
Trusty Sterba?
Yes.
All right, and then. Next item on the agenda is approve a resolution adopting a civility pledge. So the Illinois Municipal League, which we are a part of, came up with this civility pledge that they want all municipalities to adopt, and we've got a resolution to do that, and if you indulge me, I'm going to go ahead and read through this. Here we go. "Whereas the village of Piattone recognizes that the public exchange of diverse ideas, viewpoints, and robust debate are essential to democratic self-governance, and whereas the president and board trustees of the village as elected officials of the village of Piattone recognize the importance of engaging in free and spirited debate while maintaining the highest standards of civility, honesty, and mutual respect; and whereas the Illinois Municipal League has adopted a civility pledge which encourages the core tenets of civility; and whereas the civility pledge states, 'In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective; and whereas in order to publicly declare a commitment to civil discourse and express concern for the common good and well-being of all residents of the village of Piattone, the president and board trustees of the village have determined it to be in the best interest of the village of Piattone to adopt this resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved by the president, board trustees, and village of Piattone as follows. The foregoing recital shall be and are hereby incorporated as findings of fact. This civility pledge is set forth, and this resolution is hereby adopted, and the elected and appointed officials of the village of Piattone are asked to sign this civility pledge and adhere to it during all public meetings and in all official actions.'" Motion to approve that would be Resolution 23-R-06. Motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Hudson, second by trustee Moravka.
Trusty Bowden?
Yes.
Trusty Hudson?
Yes.
Trusty Jones?
Yes.
Trusty Moravka?
Yes.
Trusty Sluse?
Yes.
Trusty Sterba?
Yes.
All right, AMJ, approve a resolution authorizing agreement for services between the village of Piattone and leading IT. This will be Resolution 23-R-07. This amount was approved in the budget. This, in the past, we've had not a very comprehensive IT solution. Police department and administrative kind of had different vendors, and it was all kind of a à la carte menu. When something broke, we'd call somebody and they'd come fix it. This agreement is to correct that. We're going to have one company that covers all our IT needs, and if a problem happens, they come out and fix it. There's no additional charge to what this contract is.
So this combines the IT for admin and police?
And in all departments, so Public Works, Building, everybody.
That's a great idea.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Sluse. Resolution 23-R-07.
Trusty Bowden?
Yes.
Trusty Hudson?
Yes.
Trusty Jones?
Yes.
Trusty Moravka?
Yes.
Trusty Sluse?
Yes.
Trusty Sterba?
Yes.
All right, next, we're going to go, any motion to go in executive session to discuss employment of a specific employee and also to review executive session minutes for possible release?
Motion? Second.
Moved by trustee Sluse, second by trustee Moravka.
Trusty Bowden?
Yes.
Trusty Hudson?
Yes.
Trusty Jones?
Yes.
Trusty Moravka?
Yes.
Trusty Sluse?
Yes.
Trusty Sterba?
Yes.
And after our executive session, we may take action on the motion to hire Henry Walters and also release executive session minutes.